Hello, everyone. Now call to order the September 11th edition of the Planning Commission, City of El Segundo Planning Commission meeting. And call to order, and next, the roll call?
Commissioner Christian.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Chair Magai.
Here.
We do have quorum, but we will have a later arrival from Vice Chair Inga walking right now, and Commissioner McCavity.
Thank you. Just to note for the record that Vice Chair Inga has arrived. So, as always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation, on the land, in the municipal, in the municipality, across all.
Okay, first I will open up the, the meeting for public communications. Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to make public comment today that is on a non-agendized item? Okay, it doesn't look like it, so we will close public communications. And item number one will be the consent calendar to approve the minutes from August 14th, the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting on August 14th.
And Chair Magai, I do want to mention there was a typo in the roll call attendance. I did not include David Keen, I included Joaquin. So, that edit, if the motion could get approved with that edit.
It's a minute, I noticed that.
Yes, yes, yes. The template has been updated as well.
Okay, um, do we have a motion to approve that with that modification?
I present the motion to approve the minutes with the modification.
Can I get a second?
A second.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Inga.
Aye.
And Chair Magai.
Aye.
Motion passes for.
Okay, moving on to B, Public Hearings, item number two. Environmental Assessment Number EA 1402 and Subdivision Number Sub 25-03 for tentative parcel map number 84876 to subdivide an undeveloped parcel into two parcels at 2021 2031 Rosecrans Avenue. And I believe we have a presentation from Jasmine.
We do. Good evening Commissioners and Chair. I'll be presenting Environmental Assessment 1402 for subdivision number 2503 for tentative parcel map 84876. The project site is located in the MUS zone, and it measures 278,348 square feet. In 2019, City Council certified an environmental impact report and adopted a litigation monitoring and reporting program, and approved a development agreement, which is 5751, for the development concept of the site, which is on the east side of the lot. In 2023, part of the development concept was effectuated with the site plan review approval, and that approval was for a new seven-story office building and a five-level parking structure for the east side of the lot. No further development is allowed for that eastern portion that was approved. And although the site plan was approved in 2023, the lot remains undeveloped till this date. The applicant is requesting to subdivide one lot into two parcels, and the project does not propose new development. No changes are proposed to the previously approved site plan for the eastern portion of the lot, and this approval does not increase development intensity or potential beyond what is already allowed for that east portion. And, um, conditions, sorry, I forget. Covenant's conditions and restrictions are going to be imposed so that maintenance of the two lots continue. For the subdivision, the findings in front of you cannot be made because the subdivision creates two conforming parcels without increasing development intensity and remains subject to prior approvals and the development agreement in place. Both lots meet the mixed-use-south zoning standards, including minimum lot size, depth, and width requirements. The subdivision only allows each lot to be situated on its own parcel as permitted by the El Segundo Municipal Code. And parcel one already has approvals and will maintain adequate access and infrastructure. Parcel two, although undeveloped, is suitable for future development but would require separate city review approvals through site plan review. And the subdivision complies with all applicable standards, uses lot coverage, FAR, parking, landscape, and open space requirements to ensure proper vehicular access and pedestrian access throughout the reciprocal eastments. Additional findings that can be made as well, because the environmental impact report found that no significant impacts to habitat or endangered species will occur. The site does not contain protected environmental characteristics either. Further, the subdivision only creates two legal lots, both meeting MUS zone standards, and they're a par with the development agreement. Adequate vehicular and improved pedestrian access will be maintained, and no conflicts with public eastments are anticipated. The subdivision is exempt from CEQA for under a Class 15 minor line divisions because it creates fewer than four parcels. The site has not been divided in the past two years, and the property slope is less than 20% among others' conditions. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 2971, conditionally approving the environmental assessment EA 1402 and subdivision number 2503 for tentative parcel map 84876. And I do want to mention that the resolution under Condition 11 contained a typo. It should read "final parcel map" instead of tentative parcel map.
Okay, I'd like to open it up to the Commissioners for any questions for staff.
Okay, I was hoping someone else would ask a question.
What's the reason they want to?
Yeah, what are we doing?
Yeah.
So, it's for financial reasons, and they're also able to face out development by having developments situated in their own personal lot.
In its own personal lot. So, I guess, stepping back from the beginning.
Yeah.
This was, this parcel wasn't, we were, they thought, or they had a plan for a office building.
For a, yeah, so the, the site is known as Beach Cities Media Campus, and I'm making the assumption they wanted to do a campus at one point.
Okay, a campus. And, once it's subdivided, do they still want to do that?
I'm not sure. I would like to defer that to the applicant.
Oh, are they here?
They are here, yes.
Oh, awesome. Then they'll answer all these fun questions.
And, and just to clarify, what was approved back in 2019 was a general development concept, which capped out, uh, um, the amount of square footage for, um, different land uses, which included studio spaces, media-type offices, and, and kind of some retail. But it was, you know, really a media-type campus, and, but notwithstanding that, there was just a general, um, you know, development concept.
It was a concept, yeah.
And so, it gets effectuated per, per the conditions of approval through a site plan review, which came before you, before this body back in 2021 or 2022?
23.
Oh, there you go, 2023. And that was approved, uh, because it was all consistent with, with the, um, with, with the development concept. And then, um, and, yeah, in, in terms of this subdivision, you know, the development concept is still there. Uh, and this, any future development would just have to comply with the, with the, with the overall concept. And, uh, we would also have to take into account what the existing approvals allowed for, and, and ultimately, between the two lots, uh, that it doesn't exceed, or, or any of the impacts go beyond what was already approved and assessed back in 2019.
Can you dig a little deeper into how the, the proposed map is inconsistent with land use? We'll perhaps on the next, yeah.
So, our findings for subdivisions are a little different, the way that they're tailored. The statements pretty much are saying, if you make this finding, the subdivision can't be approved, which is why the language reads that way. I don't know why it's like that.
Yeah, it's a little nuanced, because I think the Commission is used to making findings for approval of project, of entitlement applications. For, for some reason, the way our, um, our code is written in the subdivision, you have to make subdivisions to not support, or to support a denial, if you will. So, they're almost written in reverse.
Right, I think it's consistent with state law.
Oh, is it? Okay, yeah, well, yeah, but I think the point is, like, when you, you have this, this, um, you know, this concept of what, you know, you're always making these findings to approve, yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's a little odd, because you have to have to think of it in a, in a, in a reverse, if you will.
Well, yeah, it is odd, so, but it's odd that I still don't understand.
Yeah, so like our staff report, um, for example, for finding number one, we have to make sure that we can't make this finding, or else we can't approve the subdivision, right? So, it says that the proposed map is not consistent with applicable general and specific plans as specified in Section 65451 of the California Government Code. When we write up that finding, we're basically saying, this finding, you can't make it. Therefore, we recommend that, or we're telling you that the subdivision is in compliance and consistent with the general plan and any specific plans tied to that property. Yeah.
And so, it took me a minute to get the, the bit that it's giving us all these no's, but that you're saying you're recommending yes, because there are no no's. And, and so, part of me is sort of like, okay, if the, the design concept changes, would that impact any of these decisions here?
No, no.
So, they can do whatever they want, subdivided or not subdivided, within the, the specific plan for, for that, that parcel?
Yeah, regardless of that, yeah, at the end of the day, what we're, what we're confined to looking at is whether it complies with the minimum standards for lot sizes. That's what a subdivision will do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and unless there's development tied to it, then we could look at the development concept, but there's nothing that prevents someone from coming in and, in this case, subdividing a vacant parcel, so long as it complies, if each parcel complies with the minimum standard lot sizes.
Okay.
And then any proposed development would come back as a project.
Yes.
As, as needed, yes, correct.
Yeah. And at that time is when we would analyze the development that's being proposed to be a par with standards in the code and in the development agreement with the concepts that were previously approved.
So, splitting it up into two parcels versus keeping it as one, I, I guess, how I'm looking at it, kind of gives them more flexibility versus, and they could still develop one, that, two parcels is one eventually, okay? So, it gives them more flexibility for development?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for staff before we open it up to public comment and, you know, and asking the applicant questions potentially? Okay, so I will open public comment on this item, and of, as always, if the applicant is here, we would love to hear from the applicant, um, to make some comments to, to start. Good evening.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Bob Tarnovsky. I am with Continental Development, and I am the Real Estate President. Our request here tonight is really very simple and reflective of, unfortunately, the economic conditions we all find ourselves in. When we originally envisioned this development, we had plans to develop 300,000 square feet of Class A office product on that site. And unfortunately, um, with 2020 and COVID hitting, the world got turned upside down, and our original plans for development are no longer viable, can't, quite candidly. And, uh, right now, we don't have any debt on the site, and this subdivision gives us the flexibility for financing and kind of maneuvering to best adapt to the market conditions we find ourselves in right now.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on this item? Okay, um, would that have opened it up for, for any comments or discussion from the Commission? If there are any thoughts or comments before we potentially make a motion?
I came in late, so is it appropriate for me to abstain from this? I mean, I read through the agenda, uh, I just am not sure, I've never been late before.
Yeah, if you read through the packet, then you're fully up to speed, Commissioner. So, it's up to you, but I think you're qualified to vote on it.
Okay, uh, is there a motion for this item?
A motion to approve.
I say con.
And then, if only you can mention, um, the motion with the recommended edit to Condition Number 11, yeah.
Motion to approve with a recommended edit.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Christian.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner McCavity.
I'm gonna abstain, because I don't know what that edit was.
Okay. Vice Chair Inga.
Aye.
And Chair Magai.
Aye.
Motion passes for one, right? Or is it for?
Four, two.
How does that work?
Four, zero, one.
Four, zero, one, okay. First, first time with that.
Thank you, congratulations. Moving on to Item C, New Business, the presentation of El Segundo's current land use and circulation general plan elements, and we have a presentation from Eduardo.
So, as the Commission may recall, uh, earlier this year, I hit, we had come before you kind of with the nuts and bolts of, of our department, our functions and, and roles, and, and, you know, how we implement, uh, the various documents within the, um, the, uh, that the city has adopted. And so, I thought this would be a good opportunity, since we're undertaking the, um, the land use element update, to kind of give the, uh, the Commission kind of a primer of, uh, a summary of our existing general plan and, and the various components that, that make up that general plan. So, as, as you know, community development typically takes the lead, um, on, on, on a lot of these things. And just, bear with me, just real quickly, I think some of you probably seen this. You know, our department's made up of three divisions. We each have our, our function in terms of, uh, building and safety, who, you know, they're enforcing various building codes, uh, including electrical, mechanical-type reviews and construction plans to ensure projects are built, um, to, uh, to, to engineering and safety standards. Code enforcement and neighborhood preservation, you know, they're, they're responsible for enforcing the municipal code, including, uh, property maintenance and certain building standards, and protecting life, safety, and property through enforcement of, of codes, and, uh, quality of life issues. Planning Division, which is the one, um, the division that you're most, most familiar with, because we're always here before you, uh, deals with, um, implementing the general plan and the land use element through the zoning code, um, and looking at land use issues and associated issues, compatibility and design where applicable as well. So, we figured, okay, general plan, I mean, we, we always hear this, it's kind of this long-range policy document. It's, it, 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 it kind of has, sets the blueprint for, for, for a city's development over the next, you know, 20 to 30 years. But what goes into a general plan and what constitutes a general plan generally, is I want to get into that a little bit before I go into, uh, start, uh, on, on our individual elements. But anyhow, so a general plan in, in, in general is the guiding principles that guide future development, taking into account, uh, uh, public engagement. The plan gets formulated based on, uh, different, uh, engagement opportunities, and goes before the Commission. There's an environmental review portion that's associated with that, because ultimately, we also need to assess, um, ultimate build-out and any implications that that may have on the city, both on its, any natural and built environment. So, a general plan versus the zoning code, I think, um, this was a good example of, of one of our codes that we, you recently just looked at, was, was our subdivision code. But, uh, in general, the general plan, goals, and policies are effectuated through the, uh, through the, um, zoning and adopting of the zoning code. The city is divided into various zones that identify where various land uses are allowed. Each zone contains a list of uses and activities that are either permitted by right, or it can be considered through discretionary permit process, which typically come before this body. But if you want to know the long-term, uh, uh, plan, you check your general plan. Again, long-term goals and policies are established, and that gets effectuated through our zoning ordinance, which has, again, specific standards and regulations for actual development of property. So, in looking at a general plan, in generally speaking, uh, there are seven mandatory elements per state law. Those include land use, which address how land is used throughout a city, either for housing, businesses, industry, open space, recreation, et cetera, et cetera. There's a circulation element, uh, which addresses transportation, including any public transit, roads, and other type of infrastructure related to circulation and, and movement. The third mandatory element per state law includes a housing element, and that addresses how a city will meet the, the housing needs for all income levels. Conservation element, and I say elements because they're, you know, they're, you know, they're, you know, you could also, but you can also consider them as chapters, if you will, of, of, of a novel, but, uh, but we use the term element. Conservation element, they, that addresses conservation, development, utilization of natural resources. Open space focuses on the preservation and planning of open spaces and parks within the city. There's a noise element, which addresses noise levels and how those, uh, levels and impact could be mitigated or managed to protect the, uh, health and safety of its residents. And the public safety element, which details the protection of the community from, uh, risks from disasters such as floods, fires, and earthquakes. So, there you have the seven mandatory elements, uh, that are required per state law. What makes an adequate general plan? I think the, the biggest thing is always consistency. Consistency within the document, within each element, and also consistency throughout the entire general plan document. Things that we ask ourselves when, when creating an overall general plan is, you know, that is, is it complete? Is it internally consistent? Is it consistent with state policies? Is it long-term in perspective? Is it informative and readable to the public? And are maps and diagrams adequate and also consistent throughout the document to convey, um, to the public and, and decision-makers the blueprint for, for future, um, uh, development of the city? So, comparing, uh, the required elements to El Segundo's, we have all seven elements in accordance with state law. But we also have three additional elements, uh, which, you know, are, are of our own doing, and, and that's fine. The first one is air quality, which addresses problems with maximum air pollution levels and compliance with AQMD's Air Quality Management Plan. The second element, uh, additional element that we have is an economic development element, and that deals with the economic health of the city. It focuses on expanding and maintaining the city's economic base and on the enhancement of the city's business climate. The third element, optional element that we have in El Segundo is the hazardous materials and waste management element. And then, in essence, that basically incorporates what was, at the time, back in 92, the LA County Hazardous Waste Management Plan, which has since evolved over the, uh, over the years. So, the goal here is to provide the Commission with kind of a summary of each of our elements. The first session, this one, it will focus primarily on land use and circulation elements. And I'll kind of give you a, kind of a summary of, of our existing documents, or the existing elements. Go over some of the goals and policies, and what each of the elements contain. And, uh, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's nothing for you to, you know, make any decisions on. It's more informative to, and, and more of a summary to give you an idea of the two elements that are before you, or, you know, for, not for consideration, but for, uh, you know, to get, uh, educated and familiarize yourself with, with the general plan. So, general, in general, there's the land use designations that we do have. I mean, generally speaking, there's five overarching designations, which includes residential, commercial, industrial, institution, institutional, and open space. Now, within each of those, uh, there are kind of these sub-designations, but they are land use, official land use designations. You have single-family, two-family, multifamily, which are, tend to get more denser as, as you go into the multifamily. We also have, um, a couple of specific plans that are also land use designations within our, uh, general plan, land use element. PCC, Pacific Coast Commons, uh, that is also a land use designation. And most recently, uh, if you recall, with adoption of the housing element, we also, uh, effectuated that element by adopting, uh, additional zoning codes and, 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 or zoning, uh, designations and land use designations, which include the housing overlay and the mixed-use overlay. The overarching commercial land use designations, there's quite a bit of, of different, uh, designations. Neighborhood commercial, general commercial. Those are kind of a little more of the, the smaller mom and pop to more of the general commercial, which has, uh, which you'll find primarily along PCH, um, and, uh, Rosecrans. We also have, uh, other, more intensive, uh, commercial land use designations, which are commercial centers. We also have various, um, mixed-use north and mixed-use south, which is not mixed-use in the, in the sense of, of, of mixed-use residential with commercial. Rather, that's more of a mixed-use of different, uh, industrial or, or, um, different use, non-residential use types that can be, you know, found horizontally throughout a, a specific area. Uh, various, uh, specific plans, which include Downtown Specific Plan, which was also before you not too long ago. Smoky Hollow Specific Plan is another, uh, commercial land use designation within our, uh, housing element. El Segundo South Campus, which is the Raytheon Site. Corporate Campus, which is, uh, in the location where you have the Lakers Facility, AC Hotel, Marriott Hotel, that is all, um, a land use designation and is considered Corporate Campus Specific Plan. With regards to industrial land uses, pretty straightforward, light industrial, heavy industrial. You know, light industrial permits kind of like that, light manufacturing, warehousing, R&amp;D, light office. Whereas your heavy industrial, which is primarily the Chevron refinery, that is a, that land use designation is heavy industrial. Institutional land use designations, public facilities, uh, all the, uh, the various city-owned properties. And also, uh, federal government is also another land use designation, which includes the, uh, the Air Force Base and a couple of other facilities in town. And lastly, we have the overarching open space land use designations, which again includes all our open spaces, parks. Technically, the Lakes Pacific Plan falls within that, which includes the golf course and the Top Golf Facility. So, all those that I went over are kind of captured here in all the existing land use designations. Our land use element, uh, has this table, which, you know, provides a breakdown in terms of acreages that are dedicated for each of these various land use designations. For those that are applicable to residential, it has a total number of units and, uh, and a total population projection as well. And then for the non-residential, there's, uh, some square footages with respect to the, um, the, the ultimate build-out that is, um, allowed for each of those land use designations. So, all that areas, all those areas or those designations in the city, they're correspond to, um, to our zoning, our general plan land use map. So, again, as I So again, as I indicated upfront, you know, with those questions, you know, is it informative? Is it consistent? Is it is it, you know, provide the public with with the information? Again, so this is more of an illustration of the of the various land use designations and how those are applied to the various areas in town within the city. Again, the southwest southwest corner, if you will, that's the heavy industrial land use designation, which oddly enough is the, or not oddly enough, is the Chevron refinery. So the general plan, which was last updated in nineteen ninety-two, acknowledged at the time that the city was almost entirely built out. As a result of that, several issues and trends were identified. At that time, it was identified that there was an increase in the multiple multifamily development, which reduced new single family development. And secondly, that increase in the size of single family homes, both through additions and or through demo rebuilds that are replaced with larger homes and that these trends tend to maximize land values, but also create some impacts that affect the streetscape, number of curb cuts in the street, number of street trees, light and air and private open space. I think since that time, we've, you know, we've updated our zoning code to reflect some objective standards to incorporate. For example, I think most recently, that came before the commission was the ordinance to that amended our single family zoning code where where we require the planting of a street tree for for new houses. So things like that, we we identified as, hey, these were these were issues or trends back that were identified in ninety-two. This is something that we can we can use as a basis to try to address those those issues. When it comes to non-residential, again, the the general plan element or the land use element at the time, you know, given all the overall effects, the they had identified some of the issues back then was that there was a reduction of manufacturing and heavy industrial uses. There was an increase in commercial and professional uses, such as hotels and offices, which as you look throughout town since then, there has been a number of hotels and offices built. Decrease in the availability of vacant land. I think, you know, at that time, again, it was identified that the city was almost built out. And of course, with that, there is a decrease in, there was a decrease in the in the availability of vacant land, which has even, you know, more so decreased since ninety-two. And also there was an increase in commercial uses that serve the daytime population. I think at that time, it was identified that upwards of eighty thousand people were, it was the daytime population in in El Segundo where, which is which is amazing when when you consider that our residential population is just around sixteen thousand. But to imagine that our daytime population, you know, at that peak was around eighty thousand. I've heard reports of, you know, almost pushing ninety thousand, but that's, you know, that might be hearsay. So anyhow, so those were, you know, issues and trends back then that were identified and and so, but I think, you know, in responding to some of these over the years, there have been amendments made towards zoning code and various other sections of the municipal code to address some of these these issues that were identified in the land use element in ninety-two. So when we look at the land use element, there's always, you know, there's there's always goals because in order to, you know, achieve or when you're looking at a long range plan, you know, what's your goals? What are what are you, what are you trying to achieve? What are your, what are you striving for? And in summary, the our land use element has seven overarching goals. And they were established by community engagement workshops at the time and hearings in the early nineties and were also developed to address the aforementioned issues that that I just discussed. And there are some objectives cited in the general plan and some of those objectives are to provide attractive places to live and work, objectives to prevent deterioration and blight, coordinate public improvements and beautification efforts. And these, all these objectives drive policies that align with the general plan and align with these goals that that you see before on on this slide. And policy direction is implemented and effectuated, you know, by staff, by city staff through, you know, our work plans, you know, programs and other actions. And for land use in specific, you know, it's done through our zoning code. And it's it's planning staff that implements that on a daily basis and it's also implemented by decision makers or by decisions made by the planning commission and city council for various development projects. And again, with with, you know, all those being in line with and consistent with the goals that are established in in the land use element. So with that, I am done with the land use element. Any questions or do you want to take a break or should I continue on with circulation?
Um, I think questions would be appropriate to stick to the land use.
Okay.
I don't think we need a full on break, but.
Okay, all right.
Are there any questions on the land use element? So I guess, so the format of this, are we looking back at ninety-two and then are we going to cover what's happening today in the future and as we go along in the presentation?
No, that's a good question. So so not not today in this presentation. I think right now it's just, I think it was it was good to at least give you kind of a primer as to or summary of what our existing land use element is and what it contains, the goals and and the and how it's laid out. Because this will be informative to to this body when next month we'll be coming back with kind of a study session for the land use element update. So I think this is good, you know, context to have. And and so, yeah, so this is just kind of, you know, is a good, good, good point where, you know, to provide you this information.
Okay, and it was the last, when was the last update?
The last update to the land use element was nineteen ninety-two.
Okay, that was, okay, wow, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so a lot has changed since then. Okay, good, I was going to ask questions about why are we calling ninety-two, why are we calling these things impacts or negative impacts? But it seems like we'll get to that in a future study session, so.
Okay. So moving on to circulation element, circulation element, element, excuse me, that was more recently updated back in two thousand and four. And that basically goes over, addresses traffic concerns as well as projected traffic conditions based on future demand. And it has a connection to the land use element because because there's an expected ultimate build out and that has to be planned for and addressed through our circulation element. So the circulation circulation element of two thousand and four, you know, looked at that nineteen ninety-two land use element and used that as a basis for, you know, for projecting future build out and the types of traffic concerns that could come from that and what type of mitigation measures or or improvements can be done to the circulation system to address that future build out. Again, it addresses the traffic concerns as well as projected traffic conditions based on future demand. And our circulation element also contains alternative or discussion on alternative modes of travel. So with that, on the with regards to the roadway network, so there is a street network map, our street network map illustrates the various streets within the city and identifies them as as either local streets, collector streets, major arterials. So local streets, you know, typically provide vehicular pedestrian access, bicycle access or typically neighborhood residential streets. Your collector streets are intended to serve the, you know, immediate intermediate route to handle traffic between local streets and arterials. And the arterial streets are functioned as as connecting, you know, traffic from collector streets to the major freeway system. And so those are the ones that that arterials tend to be the 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 streets that are higher in traffic volume. And the freeways are identified in our circulation element, even though there's no technically no freeway in the city, it is identified within the context of the circulation element. So these different street classifications also call out standards for each type of roadway. So for example, your local streets, there was our identified or the goal is to have a right of way width of sixty feet with thirty-six foot wide streets, depending on their intent. Your collector streets are a little bit wider and providing for, you know, around two lanes of traffic. And then you have major arterials that are identified to have a right of way width upwards ranging between ninety-eight feet to one hundred and fifty feet and that those larger arterials could accommodate anywhere between six to eight lanes of traffic. When we talk about arterials, you're typically talking about your PCHs, your your Rosecrans, boulevards, your Imperial Highway. So those are your major, kind of your major arterials, whereas your collector streets are, you know, more like Mariposa, Maple, those those are more of the collector streets. And then local streets are more of the residential type of street that, you know, we all live at. So when we look or in the circulation element looks at these different streets, you know, the circulation element uses level of service and it's used to describe the quality of traffic flow. I know some of our commissioners probably know are a little bit more familiar being in that in the industry, but LOS, it's like I said, it's used to describe the quality of of traffic flow and it defines the quality of driving conditions. And it ranges from an LOS of A, which is typically your free flowing, minimal delay, high speeds, you can kind of go through intersections, down to an LOS of F. I mean, it's it's it almost mirrors what we saw in school where, you know, A was excellent and F was a failing. And then LOS of of F is basically, you know, forced flow, it's gridlock, significant, you know, speed delays and reductions. You know, when it comes to certain intersections, you may need to go through several cycles of 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 a of a traffic signal in order to get through that, in order to get through that intersection. So that's kind of the criteria that that's used and really what, you know, and how they come to that or conclude what the level of service is of certain roadways or intersections is based on the, you know, volume to capacity ratio. So each street has a certain volume or capacity that it can that it can withstand. And then how's that compared to the 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 volume of traffic that's actually in utilizing a segment of roadway or intersection and that ends up creating this level of service A, B, C, D, E or F? So our, sorry, got that twice. So our existing operating conditions in in the, at least in the two thousand and four circulation element did call out that most roadways in El Segundo are operating at LOS of Cs or better. There are several roadways that are operating at LOS D, which is considered acceptable, marginally acceptable, but still acceptable nonetheless. Those were Aviation Boulevard, they are segments, they're not the entirety. Imperial Highway between Maine and California was identified as operating as at a level of service of D. Sepulveda, I left it as Sepulveda because at the time, that's that's how it was referred to, but in essence, it is PCH between El Segundo and Rosecrans, that is another area that operates as a marginally acceptable LOS. And PCH between Mariposa and Grand also operate at LOS D. We do have a couple of intersections where at peak hour operating conditions, which is either your AM or PM peak hours, could be between seven and I think seven and nine or four and six in the afternoon. But there are a few intersections that were identified in in our circulation element as operating as E or F during those peak hours. And here's a list of them and they're my mainly along PCH, PCH and Imperial, PCH Mariposa, at Grand, El Segundo, at Rosecrans, Aviation and El Segundo. So, so, yeah, so there's a couple of them that, you know, for example, PCH at El Segundo, LOS of E during the morning peak, you know, and that's during that just that one, that that timeframe operates at LOS E and in the PM can at times operate at a LOS of F. Which, you know, at the end of the day, it's at least one movement carries, you know, higher volume than the available capacity. So the circulation element also calls out some roadway improvements. For example, it calls out widening of Aviation Boulevard and, you know, constructing left turn pockets at certain areas. Douglas Street Extension, that was identified as as a roadway improvement within the circulation element. Constructing left turn pocket for southbound Sepulveda or PCH at at Grand. Converting Nash and Douglas Streets to two-way operational operation between Imperial and Aviation. So there were certain roadway improvements that were called out in our circulation element. I think some of these things have been have come to fruition, have been materialized and others, you know, may not, but it all comes down to funding. And and, you know, part of part of that funding is is could be, you know, come from a variety of, excuse me, a variety of sources, primarily from our city's budget. But in order to also acknowledge the impacts that certain developments may have, as this body may know, sometimes we have mitigation measures where there where the certain developments are required to pay mitigation fees for particular impacts. And then we also have as 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 in addition to that, we have adopted development impact fees or updated the development impact fees to be more in line with, you know, actual costs for improvements in maintenance of the city's roadway networks and street systems. And so that diff, as we call it, development impact fee is imposed on new score footage of development projects and, you know, we in planning or in community development will you know, calculate and collect that monies and then our colleagues in in Public Works, they they're glad that we collected that money for them because then they can use that money to 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 hopefully implement some of these improvements that were identified in the circulation element or just do the regular maintenance that is required for for our street and roadway network. The other last topic that the circulation circulation element covers is alternative modes of tran of travel. So we have public transportation, which is basically your your public transit, your bus systems that come through 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 town. Dial-a-ride, we had for a time, we had the downtown lunchtime shuttles. There's also Rail Rapid Transit, which is the C line or the former Green Line. And then there's also park and ride services as well. Other alternative modes of travel include bicycle facilities. So it calls out, you know, bike paths, whether they be class, class one, bike lanes, class twos, bike routes and all that is effectuated through the master plan of bicycle routes that has been adopted as well. And the last part of of alternative modes of travel is the pedestrian and the and the 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 walkability of of the city and and the huge part of that is ensuring that sidewalks are are present and, you know, updated and or or maintained. So all that with to say is in terms of how all, you know, the circulation element identifies as goals. Again, these four overarching goals, they're the these goals in the in the, oh, I put land use element, sorry, it should have been circulation element. Circulation element goals, these goals drive objectives, they, you know, objectives that are identified in the in the circulation element, which, as we know, the objectives drive policies that align with the general plan and the policy direction is then implemented and effectuated by staff, you know, our colleagues in Public Works through their individual work plans, through their programs and other actions. And for circulation, it's through, for example, Public Works looks at their CIP is big because that will also dictate a lot of capital improvements and some of those improvements are aligned with ensuring that circulation goals are are achieved. And ultimately, any other decisions that are made by the, not by the planning commission, but by city council and their and city council's direction to our colleagues in Public Works to improve the circulation system that in essence effectuate these goals. So with that, that's where I will conclude with these two elements. I'll be coming back over the next several planning commission meetings to just give you kind of a, again, a high level summary of of the various other elements that our general plan has. I think next time we'll, you know, I guess I'll surprise you for what comes next. I won't give you. So anyhow, but if there's any questions with regards to our circulation. with regards to our circulation or land use elements, you know, we can help.
Thank you, Eduardo, for the presentation. Any, any questions from commissioners?
No, it's very helpful. I think you should put the other elements in a bowl and we just choose the ones for the next time.
Yeah, I do appreciate that, the background on the, 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 the general plan overall, I think that was helpful for this first meeting. I do like that we added the three, I think they're very important elements for, for El Segundo, air quality, economic development, hazardous materials. So good job on that, good forward looking in nineteen ninety-two. Um, but it does have a question, so the operating conditions, so are, is the general plan going to, or the circulation element still going to use level of service as the, the metric as SEQA is moving away from that, they're moving toward VMTs? Will there be some inconsistencies in terms of individual projects and the general plan if they're different?
Well, when it comes to SEQA and, and assessing impacts from, from a project, yes, SEQA has moved away from LOS. Uh, but, and, and it, and it's now basing it on VMT or vehicle mile, miles traveled. And so for purposes of SEQA, yes, i- it, it's, they're two completely different. They, and we're going to keep them that way. But typically what will happen is the SEQA and environmental, that's just an informational document for purposes of any impacts that a, a development project may have on the physical or natural environment. Usually what happens is that SEQA is based on a project and a project is then also assessed or decisions on a project are done through the entitlement applications, which include sometimes site plan reviews, um, conditional use permits. So some sort of discretionary action where at that point, depending on what type of, 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 this, of application, going back to what we were talking about findings. Typically, the findings will say, will ask, will pose the question, does this project, is this project consistent with our general plan goals and policies? So then at that point, we will look at what type of impacts a development will generate on level of service. So we still have that tool and we still need to know that because is it consistent with our general plan? And if it's, if it's not, then what needs to be done in order to make that level of service better? Or at least make it, make it a wash? You know, so a development project may identify, hey, there's going to be an impact at, at a certain intersection that's already operating at level of service E, which we all know is not acceptable. But are there mitigation measures that can be incorporated into that development? Or additional improvements to that intersection that will either, A, raise that level of service to D, or if nothing else, maintain the existing level of service of E. I mean, it's always ideal to make it better, but you don't want to make it worse either.
So, so then SEQA project would still have to do some sort of level of service analysis to make sure it's in compliance with SEQA? Or it's mitigating all, all the impacts, you know, as SEQA sees them? But it would also have to do some level of service analysis to be compliant with the general plan?
With, exactly.
Okay, interesting.
I just want to add a chair, a, a, a little bit of color to that. In the same way that state legislation is watering down local municipalities or local agencies, land use discretion when it comes to housing. Similarly, and you're familiar with VMT, uh, the vehicle miles traveled is a philosophy that has been pushed through SEQA. Um, and with that, has also been state legislation that is starting to chip away at a local municipality's ability to implement mitigation measures, as Eduardo pointed out, that result in potentially increased trips. So if the intent of the mitigation measure is in order to accom- is, is, is meant to accommodate additional vehicle trips, like adding a lane or widening the street, then we're prohibited from doing that, uh, moving forward. And I can't remember exactly when that went through, it was within the last few years. Um, but things like that are also incrementally happening at a state level. And obviously our, our circulation element, it's actually newer than our other elements, but it's already a little outdated. But I imagine that when we get to redoing our circulation element, we'll have to modernize it. We'll probably have to marry it with VMT and transportation demand modeling, you know, mechanisms. And, um, there's going to have to be a bit of a modernization of it, but we'll also have to make sure that although LOS is an important metric to use and, and, and engineers are accustomed to using LOS, um, we'll probably still always use it, but it, the results of how we use it might change moving forward. I just wanted to put that out there because very much like housing, the, the philosophy on VMT versus LOS is, is also a, a battle at the state level and, and we sort of lost the ability to have our own control over some of that.
Okay, thank you for that. And, yeah, it's, and then that's kind of why I'm bringing it up, right? There, there will be some, I guess, butting heads between the two different philosophies, but I think they're both, both very important. But, you know, I think circulation as a whole versus just level of service or transportation modeling are two very different things. And I think that they have to marry up, so. And then a, a couple more quick things. So the proposed projects since twenty twenty-four, do we have any data that says that we implemented this and it has worked or it has, um, uh, improved level of service? Um, I think that there were seven projects that, that are, they're recommended projects. Do we know if they were successful and that they, uh, improved level of service? Yeah, these, I did find it interesting that the level of service, um, the road segments, they're basically all on Sepulveda, but then there's, most of these are not on Sepulveda. But, um, yeah, I just am curious if, if we know how these turned out.
Sorry, yeah, honestly, I, I don't know to what extent whether they, you know, how much of an improvement there were. But I think just looking at, at widening aviation and what it was that they, uh, adding one lane in each direction, presumably would have, but of course, I mean, I guess you could always think of it as induced demand as well. But, uh, but yeah, I think if, 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 if indeed all these were implemented, then at least it would have made the situation at, at least at tho- at these areas for roadway improvements better. So yeah, so I think, I think at the end of the day, no, there isn't any data one way or another, but
Okay.
At least that I'm aware of, but I can always check with our Public Works Department and report back if needed.
Okay, okay, thank you. And a cou- couple more quick things, I guess, one, one quicker thing. So, uh, um, the local area network for the, uh, South Bay Cities is, is, is newer, that, that obviously came out in two thousand four. So that's going to be part of the circulation element, right, and ways to improve that program?
Yeah, and then, and then if, yes, exactly.
Okay, okay. And then lastly, would the circulation element be the appropriate time to address the potential for closing down or reducing to one lane, uh, main street here? Is that something that would be up for discussion within the circulation element development?
That could most likely, most be appropriate at that time, but, you know, at the end of the day, when we're looking at, at those types of alternatives of saying, you know, reducing it down to one lane, at the end of the day, does, does it comply with the overall goals of the circulation element? I mean, we're provision of a safe, convenient, cost-effective circulation system. You know, one could say that, you know, maybe it does make it safer where if you're reducing it down to one lane and making it more, you know, more walkable and more, more sidewalks, you know, you could make the argument that, yeah, that still is consistent with, with that. I mean, does it necessarily need to be, uh, broadcasted or, or identified in the circulation element? Not a, not a, no, not, not, not in its entirety, because just like any other project that can be undertaken or considered, it doesn't have to be blatantly stipulated or in, in the element. But so long as that continues to effectuate and be consistent with the goals that are established within the, the circulation element, you're fine.
Okay.
Sure, and I'll add, I, I think another point where it can come up is probably the land use element update. It's a little, the, the land use element update crosses over a fair amount with all, all the other elements. Um, I, I might be a little biased because we're land use planners and we, you know, that's our bible. The land use element is what we lean on the most, um, but it is probably the element that's most intertwined with the other elements. And that is a little bit of a land use discussion. Um, and the outcome of that in the land use element update could then inform, and I won't commit to a time because it'll be expensive, but that whenever we update the circulation element, it'll help us inform what are the priorities and we'll look to the land use element for goals, policies, programs that are recommended from that standpoint to help in, you know, eh, you know, educate the process on a potential circulation element update.
Okay.
So, and if you recall, it was, some of that discussion was incorporated in the two, the downtown specific plans. So it's very natural that it's part of that conversation.
Okay, sounds, yeah, I just want to, I guess, put it out there, um, because if, you know, this last updated twenty, twenty-one years ago, at least have something, an open door within this update, so that we don't have to wait another twenty years before. And I'm not saying we, we do it or, or don't do it, but it like have some sort of options to consider, um, as these updates are not, they're very few and far between, so.
I, eh, did you have more?
No, I'm done.
And so I guess, sort of continuing on that thought, so when we are presented these separate elements that sort of interlock together, like circulation and land use, are we then going to consider changes to both of those things at the same time? Or how would we re- reconcile them when we look to update them?
Yeah, it's a logistical challenge. If we could afford it and we had time, the most ideal scenario would be we update all elements. It would be a comprehensive general plan update. Uh, it's extremely expensive. If you recall, just the land use element update alone is, is close to a million dollars. So multiply that, and not all the elements are going to cost that much because some of them are, are a bit simpler. But just, you know, multiply that by the number of elements and the amount of engagement and then amount of, uh, investment that takes on staff and consultants, et cetera. And so although that's the best case scenario, it's, it's rather rare that that does happen. And so most municipalities save up money, they do one at a time. Um, or they might do a couple at a time if, if, if they are related, like frequently.
Like this one?
Well, I, I, it's hard, I can make the argument that the land use element is almost equally related to circulation that is to open space or public safety or, um, the, the conservation element. I mean, there, I can make the argument for almost the interplay between land use element and any of the other economic development. Um, and so prioritizing that is tough. The most recent element that was updated is a circulation element. Um, but I think one, one way of looking at it is where, where do you see the most impact? Um, and I think this, you know, circulation element, an updated circulation element would have a faster and more, um, reasonable impact on, and, you know, in the more immediate sense. Um, because it comes into play when you approve development projects, it comes into play when Public Works plans out their five-year capital improvement plan. Um, and the other elements aren't leaned on as heavily as say the land use or the circulation element. But, uh, we can, we haven't strategized when we're going to update the other elements yet. Right now, our focus is the, the land use element.
Yeah, I guess I would want to give some thought to how we sequence that. And to think about if it makes sense for us to consider circulation and land use together, only because I would worry about not incorporating it this time around if we're, if we're going to focus on land use and then have to go back later and fix mistakes that are errors of our, errors of omission when we updated the land use and left out the circulation and now we have inconsistencies, we're going to have to spend money to research to figure out how to fix. I, I would like to think we would think about how we can marry those two where, where it makes sense. I definitely, I mean, I wouldn't agree that all of them would cost the same, I, I, or in terms of, you know, the cost to research and develop the, the plans around those as much as, as this one with land, with land use.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. It's certainly important, I, I will say the land use element generally drives the rest of the elements because it is development that drives the public safety demand by population and capacity. It's what drives the circulation demand, it's, it's what drives most of what the elements are. Um, so the fact that we're starting with the land use element, I'm a hundred percent comfortable with that as long as the sequential conversations use that as the new baseline. Right now, what we'll have is we'll have a new baseline and then we'll have elements that are based on something from forty years, thirty, you know, forty years ago, uh, or thirty years ago. Um, so I, and that's why we should accelerate updating the remainder of the elements and, and probably prioritizing, as you've suggested. I will be a little transparent, I, there are state laws that trigger certain additional elements that are required when you touch a certain number of elements at the same time. Um, and so just to be transparent, I'm also trying to
Avoid that.
Defer.
And, and, and we'll talk about that, right, in those future sessions, like what those risks are. I'm not aware of what they are, maybe the rest of the commissioners are more familiar, but you guys will advise us as to what those, those landmines are.
Not landmines, they're very important elements, um, but I just, yeah.
Landmines, if we mess it up and trigger a thing we didn't want to trigger, right?
Yeah, and we will, there's actually, we will be updating, um, it's the circulation element and the part, or open space. There's new legislation that within the next several years, we have to make mandatory updates to those elements anyhow. Whether we do it comprehensive or, you know, we sort of touch the relevant section. So we will be doing that also, um, but it's important that we do continue this, uh, sequential update of, of all the elements. And I, you know, I thank Eduardo for putting this presentation together. We thought it was important, if you noticed, all of the findings that you have to make as a body are born in compliance with the general plan, land use element or, or general plan elements in their, in their, in their entirety. Um, and our zoning code is the implementing policy and the developments that you see before you are the implementing physical components of that. And so it really, not just the land use element, but all the elements drive the decisions that you're supposed to be making and, and the drive the decisions that we make on a daily basis. Um, so I won't soft pull, you, you can either confirm or deny whether you're familiar with all of the elements. Uh, but, uh, it's an important understanding as we make these findings and navigate how we're making those findings. So thank you, Eduardo, for putting that together.
You weren't kidding, Michael, when you said you were biased toward the land use element. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, and there's no action on this item, right?
Yep, no action.
Okay, so we will receive and file. Uh, moving on to item D, unfinished business, there's none, uh, reports from the Community Development Director?
No, I thought, I was going to thank Eduardo for this during my reports, um, but I did that, so you only get it once tonight. The other, and I think Eduardo already mentioned, we have the study session coming up. Uh, but before the study session, we have the TAC on the second of next month. So, and then the study session for the planning commission will be the following week, the Thursday, the following, which I think is the ninth, the ninth of October. Is that right? Yeah, uh, so that'll be great, really healthy, good conversations, looking forward to that. The consultant team will be here, they will facilitate that conversation and of course, staff will be here as, as well for that. But I'm looking forward to that discussion.
Thank you. Uh, any reports from the commissioners? Nothing to report, uh, reports from the city attorney?
I have the report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I will, I will take this to, again, uh, plug, shameless plug to our general plan land use, uh, survey. That's a, uh, that's online, so I want to just mention that, because I think that's closing on, on the eighteenth or, yeah. So if you haven't done so, general public, please go to, visit our website and, 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 and fill out that, that survey on the general plan land use, uh, element update.
Can you, uh, send that to us, the, the link on email and then we can post it on our social media?
Oh, sure, yeah, definitely.
I mentioned parking or something.
Yeah, exactly. So, okay, with that, I think we, we are done. Thank you, everyone, we're adjourned.